This is Peter Pritchard. I have the honor of being the chairperson of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. I call the meeting to order for our September meeting. Marty, if you would do the roll call.
Okay. Member Acharya.
I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Langston.
Present.
Member Sac, absent. A member Toterei.
Present.
Member Michael.
Present.
Do you, member Robuck?
Here.
Chairman Pritchard.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum here tonight.
Thank you, Marty. Any changes to the agenda from the staff side, Michelle?
No, Chairman, there are not.
Any from the board side? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. While we're waiting for a volunteer, I should mention that Chris Robuck will be a voting member this evening. Please go ahead.
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
And can I call upon member Acharya?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
So I have a motion in a second. Let's do the roll call vote, please, Marty.
Okay. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterei.
Aye.
Member Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Move on then to item four, which is approval of minutes from August. Any changes from any board members?
No.
Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Sanjay. Do I have a second?
Second?
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Oh, nope.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Have to do it. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Sac, oh, member Toterei.
Aye.
Uh, member Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Minutes were approved unanimously.
Thank you. Oh, habits die hard. Thank you, Marty. Do we have any public comment that's come by email?
No, nothing's been submitted.
So no email submissions, and I see nobody in the lobby? So we'll move right ahead to item number six, 6A, and ask Emily to present 6A.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I'm presenting item 2020-251-0, consideration of items to amend the zoning map for 151 Keybridge Drive. The subject parcel is shown here, outlined in red. The Town of Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department has submitted a request to rezone the parcel at 151 Keybridge Drive from the existing Town Center Commercial zoning district to Park Greenway Open Space zoning district. Here's some information about the property. It's approximately 3.15 acres. And the property is currently undeveloped. And the land use plan designation for the property is parkland, so the applicants have stated they intend to use the property as a park, so this item will amend only the zoning map and not the land use map. Uh, this is aerial imagery from May of this year showing the area surrounding the subject parcel. You can see the adjacent Crabtree Creek Nature Park there as well, and some other surrounding developments. Specifically, the parcel is surrounded on the north and the east by the existing Crabtree Creek Nature Park, which is zoned Park Greenway Open Space. To the west is a small commercial center. There's a daycare there and a multi-tenant office space. It's zoned Town Center Commercial, which is also the present zoning of the subject property. And to the south, there's a high-density residential zoning district with the arium western apartments and low-density residential zoning for Weston Estate subdivision. This map here is from the 2007 Town Center Plan, which is a part of our 2009 Future Land Use Plan. You can see the subject parcel indicated there, and you can see that it was designated for parkland as part of the 2009 Future Land Use Plan. If the rezoning application is approved, the applicant, Town of Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department, have stated that they intend to combine this parcel with the adjacent Crabtree Creek Nature Park parcel and further develop the two parcels together into an upgraded Crabtree Creek Nature Park. And this is just a closer-in-view of the same site rendering. You can see the red lines outline the subject parcel there, and you can see some of the park amenities that will be located at this end of the park on this parcel. Staff is recommending approval of the requested zoning map amendment for the following reasons. First, the proposed rezoning to Park Greenway Open Space is consistent with the 2009 land use plan designation for this property as parkland. The proposed rezoning to facilitate further development of Crabtree Creek Nature Park is consistent with the 2018 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The proposed Park Greenway Open Space zoning district is compatible with surrounding zoning districts. And the requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with developments in the town center, thereby resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. Staff has provided a draft motion template. I'm also happy to answer any questions. If you don't have questions for me immediately, Kyle Cooper, the Parks and Recreation Planner, is also participating remotely and is going to speak about the parks project very briefly as well.
Very good. Thank you, Emily. Any board member questions?
No.
Seeing none. And I assume, Marty, that we had no public comment on this one.
No, we had no public comments.
Does Kyle wish to speak, or do we?
Uh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Yes, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to speak about the, um, about the design details with the, like, if the, I'd be happy to speak a little bit about the, um, about the proposed concept a little bit. With, as Emily stated, we're hoping to use this combination of this part, of these two parcels to help further develop the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. But as of right now, the park is a, it is currently used as an open field with a cricket pitch in it. What we are looking to do is to use the parcel that we are rezoning to develop a restroom shelter and a nature playground on that area, since that's the, um, that area is out, that is where we can develop, where we would be most able to develop those two uses. We would also be expanding the parking, adding in another row of parking into where the open field is currently. And we would be adding in a rain garden and a constructed wetland, which you can see that cuts through the middle of the, um, cuts through the middle of the design. And we would also be having a lawn and a meadow for educational purposes and to help showcase, um, different types of wildflowers in the area. And lastly, we would be looking at, we would be adding in trails, rerouting the existing Greenway Trail that runs through the nature park to be moved around to the left side of all of the development in order to make more room for the development, and adding in a boardwalk loop in, in on the existing wetlands in the nature park. That's kind of the general overview of what we're hoping to expand on the design.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are we ready to make a motion? I call upon member Toterei.
Sure. As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2020-251-0 to the Marshall Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a plan consistency review statement for zoning map amendment for 151 Keybridge Drive located north of Keybridge Drive, east of intersection Keybridge Drive and Chapel Hill Road, west of the intersection of Keybridge Drive and Calvesta Drive to the Park Greenway Open Space PGO zoning district, Res 000239-2020, based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because, A, the 2009 Future Land Use Plan designates the subject parcel as proposed parkland, and B, the 2018 Parks and Recreation Master Plan designates this parcel as parkland combined with existing Crabtree Creek Nature Park.
Thank you, Tim. Do I have a second for that motion?
I second.
Sanjay. Okay, I'll call the roll.
Was it member Acharya who seconded?
Uh, Sanjay.
Yes.
Yes. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterei.
Aye.
Member Robuck.
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. So I thank our staff members, Emily and Kyle. And it's kind of good to see that the town is following its own principles here, not trying to get things through under the table, so to speak. So it's good that we're following our own procedures. Thank you very much.
There, there's one more motion.
Oh. Thank you. So we have a second motion to make. Sorry, I'm ahead of myself here.
Sure, happy to carry on. I hereby motion to recommend approval to the Town Council of Ordinance 2020-251-0, approving a zoning map amendment for 151 Keybridge Drive located north of Keybridge Drive, east of the intersection of Keybridge Drive and Chapel Hill Road, west of the intersection of Keybridge Drive and Calvesta Drive to the Park Greenway Open Space PGO zoning district, Res 000239-2020.
I second that as well.
Thank you both. So we have a motion in a second.
Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterei.
Aye.
Member Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The zoning map amendment was approved unanimously.
Good, now we're done. Thank you. Thanks, Emily. So we're ready, we'll move on to item 6B.
And Chairman, we do have one member of the public in the lobby waiting to speak when we do get to that part of the meeting. I will go let Planner Ward know that we are ready for him.
Thank you. So we're just waiting for other members to join us in the chamber here. We're just getting ready to welcome Planner Two, Elliot Ward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so the first item I'll be presenting this evening is item 2020-258-0. It's a request to amend the land use plan and zoning map for 1001 Airport Boulevard. The subject parcel outlined in red is located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and is east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway. This is the former outlet mall site. The applicant, Equator Capital Management, is requesting that the land use plan be amended from Regional Activity Center to Business Activity Center, and that the zoning map amended from the Regional Activity Center District to the Conditional Business Activity Center District. The site is adjacent to RAC zoning district on all sides, and the request is to accommodate, excuse me, the request is to accommodate an anticipated life sciences use categorized under research laboratory in the UDO. The site is approximately 24.6 acres and identified by Wake County PIN 0747-38-2750. The current land use for the site is general commercial. However, the existing building is currently under construction and to be converted to office and lab space. The site is located within the town's corporate limits and would not need to be annexed. For the request, the applicant has offered the condition that forestry, utility facility major, and central utility plant uses would not be permitted at this site. The applicant provided a trip generation memo based on the TIA conducted for the previously approved site plan, which can be found in attachment to the petitioner's application packet. The memo indicates that the anticipated research laboratory use has the potential to generate fewer peak hour trips as compared to the current commercial use. The memo also includes peak hour trip estimates for a sample of other uses that would be permitted on the property if the application is approved. And staff from Kimley Horn is here to help answer any potential traffic questions you may have following the presentations. Staff recommends approval for the requested land use plan amendment and zoning map amendment from Regional Activity Center to Conditional Business Activity Center for the following reasons. The requested zoning map amendment would allow for uses that are compatible with uses in the surrounding area, included the anticip, including the anticipated research laboratory and office use. The zoning map amendment would help facilitate reuse, reuse of a significant property in a manner that supports the tax base and creates jobs while placing limited demands on the town's infrastructure. And the requested land use designation of Business Activity Center would be consistent with the proposed draft land use plan, which is currently still in review should that draft be approved. The board is asked to make a recommendation on Resolutions A and B and the ordinance this evening. Following the presentation, the applicant has asked to make a brief presentation as well. We also received a, a comment through the public comment portal, which will be read following the applicant's presentation. That's all I have right now. Myself, as well as the applicant, will be available to answer any questions following their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Call upon the applicant then to address us.
Speak from here is okay?
I think that's probably better, then we don't want to have to change the microphones and so on.
Okay, thank you. And good to be with you tonight. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Richard Brown with, I'm a land planner and professional landscape architect with Kimley Horn and Associates. With me tonight is Kevin Dean, professional traffic engineer. So between the two of us, we should be able to at least confuse you, if not answer most of your questions. But again, just excited to bring this rezoning petition to the, of the town. Appreciate you all hearing us tonight. We have also with us on virtually our client, Dylan Elton, who would be available if needed to address any questions additional to those that, that we may be able to answer. I don't want to really belabor the, the board's time with a full-on presentation, but up in front of you is just a, an illustration of the site plan that, that shows essentially what we're, the improved improvements to the site that we're making. And at the tail end of, of my comments, we can go through a few representative example illustrations of what the building space would look like internally and externally. I did want to, before doing, getting into that, just underscore a few points that Mr. Ward made in the staff recommendation in the presentation. The, as he mentioned, we're simply proposing to go from an RAC to the BAC district specifically to allow and, and to maintain the airport overlay district, no changes to that from the applicant's standpoint, specifically to allow the, for the, uh, growing demand for life sciences uses, research and lab spaces, office and associated production facilities that, that go along with that, and, and, and just to meet that demand that's growing here in the Triangle and in the town of Morrisville. As he, as he noted, the current, current building is under construction today. We have gone through the past year and a half of site plan and now approvals and permitting, and now construction is, is wrapping up on the shell of the facility. And in the meantime, as the market has evolved and adapted to these life sciences uses, our client is in active discussions with a lab user. That's really the impetus of this proposal tonight. Just a quick, a quick couple of consistency statements that we wanted to add is that the, the plan is consistent, you know, with the future land use map, as staff has, has noted here. By attracting research and development and life science employers, and we'll also, this proposal would also contribute positively to the town's position as a regional destination and employment center for high-quality jobs and employment. And I wanted to just state that in our view, we're consistent with specific statements of the comprehensive plan and, and the goals. Goal number one, as written in the, the document, is to establish a strong and clear, positive and distinct community image, building upon Morrisville's unique character, history, and desirable regional location. We believe we're consistent with that, as well as goal number four, which is to promote innovative and healthy commercial office and industrial spaces that serve the needs of residents, provide employment, strengthen the Town of Morrisville's tax base, and also capture a larger regional market. At the same time, we're consistent with the surrounding land uses, with the uses that we've conditioned out of this rezoning, as well as the uses allowed, the remaining uses allowed under the BAC. We feel like we're compatible with the adjoining land uses and consistent with the, the unique location that this project and this site is in, adjoining to major, to the town's major transportation corridors. And, and positioned well and in, and also consistent with the town's current proposed land use plan, as Mr. Ward mentioned, that is currently in process. Just a couple of final points is, from a traffic standpoint, as, as noted, we'll see, we're, we're proposed to see negligible, if not moderate reductions between the allowable uses today and the RAC and the, the use that we're proposing and the uses that would be allowed within the, the BAC. Kevin can speak a little bit further to any detail of that from a traffic standpoint as needed. And finally, based on all of the, the above comments, we feel like the proposed zoning is, and, and the intended use do not adversely affect the adjoining property or property owners. As I turn it back over to the, the board for questions, I did want to just give you a sense for the board, for the type of quality of development that we're talking about, moderate, modernizing the exterior improvements, as shown here with, with parking improvements and site, and, and a significant site improvements and outdoor amenities, as you can see, not changing the height, not changing really any aspects of the scale of the existing building, but upgrading the exterior improvements, as you can see here, if you can flip. The next two slides are indicative of the quality amenities that are being provided by Equator Capital for the tenant, either a single or multi-tenant user for the building. And then the next slide shows the, the outdoor amenity space, courtyard space closer to the, the creek side, all activating the interior and the exterior uses from a, a high-quality amenity package. Next, last couple of images are indicative of the interior of the space with high base ceilings, a lot of natural lighting flooding the space, and modern interior outfits for the modern workforce. Think the next one is another just perspective image of sort of that, that axis in the middle of the building that, that is being reimagined to be an indoor amenity. And then lastly, to leave you with a couple of exterior images of just illustrating how the exterior will be upfit into a modern exterior. And I think there's one more slide, just to leave you with the image, or one more after this, to leave you with the image of the overall project in terms of its context. And thanks again for your time and hearing us tonight, and we're available and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. And appreciate the images, too. That gives us a, a good flavor of the project. Thank you. So call upon Marty now to read the public comment.
Okay. We have received one letter from Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority. It reads, ladies and gentlemen, please accept this letter as formal objection by the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority to the above referenced land use plan amendment and rezoning. These amendments, if approved, could allow a future residential use of this property. The subject property lies approximately one mile from the approach end of our largest commercial runway, i.e. runway 5L/23R, along the extended runway center line, and is subject to frequent arrival and departure over flights at all hours of the day. Allowing a residential use in this area would create an incompatible land use with airport operations. Although we recognize that the existing airport overlay district would currently prohibit a residential use, the town is nearing completion of a new comprehensive land use plan and will consider potential future amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, including changes to the airport overlay district. Any changes to the existing airport overlay district that would allow residential uses in areas currently prohibited will be opposed by the authority. Since this proposal is one step closer to creating future residential uses in this area, we are compelled by our obligations to the, compelled by our obligations to the Federal Aviation Administration to oppose its approval. If you have any questions, please contact. Sincerely, Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority, William C. Sandifer, AAE.
Thank you, Marty. And with that, I'm going to ask Elliot if you have any, is that a surprise to you, or have you addressed that? What's your reaction to that?
That's not a surprise. I will say we have one, one person for public address for this, yeah.
Sir, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is TJ Bagat. I'm one of the property owner, adjacent to the mall where this development is going. And thank you for giving me opportunity to speak over here. I was just here to get more information about the development. I don't have any comments, but the only thing that we would like to find out is how it will impact the properties or the businesses next door, which is on the Factory Shops Road.
Thank you. If I could just get your name and address one more time.
Sure. My name is TJ Bagat, and I'm the property owner of Microtel Inn Hotel on Factory Shops Road. The address is 10- Shops Road. The address is 104 Factory Shops Road, Morrisville, North Carolina, 27560.
Thank you. So you're welcome, I think, to find one of the COVID-designated spots to sit and listen, if you'd like to. Thank you. Go back to my question, then, if I may, Elliot, the issue about the airport.
Yes, so we met with the RDU Authority on Tuesday and kind of explained what was going on with this rezoning. And then they had a conversation with Dylan Elkind on Wednesday, and it had asked if the applicant would be willing to add residential uses as a condition. I was told by the applicant, and they can obviously speak for themselves better than I can, but I was told that because it's a day before the meeting, there were some issues, possibly complications on their end from lender standpoint. And so they didn't want to just jump ahead and add that condition on. And so Bill with RDU Authority said, well, you know, if it's not on there, then he would have to send this letter. And so that's where we are.
I see. So in terms of today's land use plan, is what we have to consider today, and today's zoning, does the land use plan exclude residential from BAC?
So the land use plan does not exclude residential. However, residential is precluded because of the airport overlay.
Right.
So the residential uses are permitted, but they're not permitted because of the overlay. So as long as that airport overlay exists, residential can't be constructed in this area.
Okay.
Yeah.
So residential is possible in BAC, both land use plan and zoning, right?
Correct.
Right. And the airport overlay is a voluntary thing that the town of Morrisville has imposed on Morrisville?
Right. It would require council to remove that overlay.
Sure.
And the applicant has indicated on Teams if he could respond as well, Mr. Chairman. Dylan Elkind would like to speak.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the name?
Dylan Elkind, the applicant, was asking if he could address the board regarding that question.
Please go ahead, Mr. Elkind.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Dylan Elkind with Equator Capital Management, one of the physicalists of this property. And just to further on Elliot's response, and I just pulled up the Morrisville zoning book to make sure that I was correct here. But the current, there is no difference, and Elliot, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no difference in the residential use between RAC and BAC as far as the current zoning and what we're trying to rezone the property as. Both are permitted, or both the different kinds of residential uses are permitted under RAC, are also permitted under BAC. So from what we are currently at and what we're trying to go to, the AOA affects both of them in the same way and prohibits it. So I must reject that their point, that this is taking one step further to developing residential on the site is not applicable, as in if we did nothing, there would be completely no change to our ability to build residential as if we went through with the rezoning. So our position is that their point is not applicable to our motion at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could elaborate, I know that there's been discussion with the draft land use plan about potentially amending the airport overlay district. The draft that the planning board did see last month, and that town council has begun their review of, does at least propose some changes to the airport overlay district boundaries, as you know, but that's more in the area of the New McCrimmon Parkway extension. The draft plan at least does not propose any changes to the overlay in this area.
Thank you. So as I look down the principal use table, I think there are some subtle differences for residential use. I think theoretically, you could have a family care home in BAC, but not in RAC. But I think we're down into the weeds there.
Yeah, my apologies. I must have missed that one. You're right.
You're fine. I think you did a very good job off the cuff, so to speak. I'd like to open it now to members of the board, if you have any comments or questions. If you would indicate that, and then Michelle will flag that to me. Member Robuck, please go ahead.
Thank you. I have two questions. My first one is, how many tenants do you expect to be in this building?
Right now, it's marketed for either single or multi. There may be, it really depends on the end user, but right now, it's being shelled up for construction purposes. The preference would be to one tenant, but I think the market's going to dictate that.
And my second question, my second question was, you show in your illustration people walking around, but the letter from Kim Lee Horn in your presentation illustrated life science labs and production facilities, which is not covered here. And I'm not exactly sure if that is BAC. So if this is one user site, the parking lot might look like this, but my interest would be, is this whole facility an industrial lab? And is it biotech? And are there tanks in there? Is there wastewater treatment plant? So what's inside this one large facility?
Yeah, no, I would probably do a poor job of reflecting exactly the ins and outs of the users. And maybe Dylan can elaborate a little further, but it's essentially going to be a Class A office-based environment with those same types of coworkers in spaces. And it'll be a combination of research, development, or potential for research, development lab spaces, and Class A office space, as you would know it. And there are, in the stitch, as we call it, are the public amenity areas on the interior and exterior of the build, or of the inside of the building that are common spaces, really, that are shared amenities to either a single or multi-tenants. But as far as it being a, you know, more of a manufacturing-heavy facility, that's not the intent of this research and lab office mix of uses that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Member Acharya, please go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I have two questions. Elliot, the first question is to you. Are the exceptions from the previous time we approved the rezoning to now the same, you know, the things that are taken off the table for them, forestry, utility facility, and central utility plant? I don't remember all the ones that were listed in the initial.
Sorry. So those were the three proposed prohibited uses.
Right. So these were the same ones the last time they came around for RAC that we agreed to, right?
So there was a previous rezoning that came before us, and presumably those conditions were also in the previous rezoning?
I can find out.
If there were any additional ones, you know, you may want to include them, just to make sure we are not deviating from that. Okay. The other question I had was maybe for Mr. Dylan, it's around the lines, Chris asked. So R and B can be very broad, right? And if it is for life sciences, are there any, are there anything around biomaterials that we need to be aware of? And if so, what are your plans of taking care of any bio-waste that might be generated from this research lab? Do you want to do this model?
Yes, thank you. At this time, there's no plans that I know of that would, this use would develop any bio-waste or anything like that. It's more of the intent is to open this up to life sciences years and R and B, you know, the one user we're talking about would have a dry lab, which is just hoods and vents and that type of thing. I guess the long way, or the short way of answering the question is, we would, since we don't have any plans to produce any of that type of waste, we currently don't have a plan to dispose of it. But if that were to be permitted use here, and we were to go that route, we would comply with all local and, you know, federal, I guess, guidelines of dealing with that.
If I could just add, at some point, if you're getting into those types of activities, the use becomes potentially a lighter, medium kind of manufacturing use and gets classified differently than a research lab. And a research lab is permitted in the BAC district, manufacturing is not.
Yeah, I think the issue, Michelle, is how do you define a research lab, which may have prototyping manufacturing, which may have testing? And it's not a clear black and white. There's a, I'm sure there's a spectrum, a gray area between, having once worked in a prototype lab for silicon that actually was churning out more silicon than the adjacent factory was. So I think those are the sorts of concerns that I think I'm hearing. So whether it's a zoning-type issue or whether we're going to rely on other governmental standards and watchbodies, that's my question for us.
Exactly where I was with. Because R and B can, is not necessarily considered a manufacturing by industry, and, you know, it can just be two people doing some proof of concept work, and can generate a lot of waste.
Right.
As long as it is addressed in some other, you know, plan or some other controls, I'm okay with it.
I'm going to let that mull for a little while and call on Member Totori. I think you had a question.
Sure. This is in relation to the trip generation estimation. I was wondering how we arrived at the 192 figure, and if that is related at all to occupancy and the number of folks that would potentially be on-site, either by parking space that's there or by just the occupancy of the facility itself, planning and layout.
I guess I got to call on Mr. Dean to answer that one.
Absolutely. This is Kevin Dean with Kim Lee Horn. So the trip generation methodology used in the memo is from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and the independent variable that we use for calculating those trips is building size. So it's in thousands of square feet. That is NC DOT's mandated methodology for calculating trips for a research and development center site. So we followed that protocol. And so research and development center, like other uses in the Trip Generation Manual, are based on multiple data points that are independently verified, and then that data goes to build the equations and average rates that are used to calculate those trips. So it's based on square footage, but typically with multiple data points, it encompasses facilities and captures an appropriate range of those users.
And so maybe you could speak a little more around that particular point as far as square footage versus setup. So if I look at, are we trying to estimate a situation where folks are entering that facility at roughly the same time? So in other words, are there an average of 192 people that would be working there, or is it an average of 500 people that are working there? And then, you know, we're kind of staging that. So what I'm trying to get a feel for is, what's the range for that potential occupancy? You get a hot desk and five times as many people ultimately working there in the same square footage? Or there could be, you know, lush offices with a lot of lab equipment, and then there's 20% of that contemplated workforce? Any insight around that, of the ranges?
So I'm not personally sure on the number of employees, but what I can tell you is when we performed the, we performed a traffic impact analysis previously for the redevelopment of the outlet mall site, and that assumed all general office space, and then this trip generation calculation was based on all research and development space. Now, when we did all general office space, that assumes higher trip generation. And we performed an analysis that was reviewed by NC DOT and the town's third-party consultant, and determined that the roadway network and the driveways were sufficient to accommodate the number of trips that were generated. So we feel comfortable that if it were all general office space, which is not the intent, but if it were all general office space, if it acted like just general office space, that number of trips could be accommodated. If research and development center made up some part or all of the space and trip generation was lower, then we would expect that to also be accommodated because it's a lower number of trips. Now, the number that you're seeing is the single highest hour in the morning, same for the PM peak hour. So when you look at those volumes, it's not suggesting that only 192 people will enter the site in the morning and only 39 will exit in the morning. Instead, it's in a single peak hour, what is the highest volume of trips anticipated for that particular use. I realize that that doesn't give you the range of employees that you may have been looking for, and I apologize for that, but I think, given the range of uses that we've studied, we feel comfortable that the traffic can be accommodated.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on that, Tim?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments or questions? I'm going to go back to the couple of questions we had then, and ask whether the applicant would consider adding conditions that restricted no residential, and whether there's something that the applicant could come up with which would somehow restrict the level of production and testing. And I don't know how I would define that, but maybe that's something that could be added. I think the applicant is going to be the landlord, so presumably in the lease, there'd be some sort of restriction on what the tenants would be allowed to do. So maybe that's where we have that safeguard. But I think that's a concern that a number of members here have. And so I think if there's a way that we could address that, and probably not this meeting, so what we might do, the board might consider making motions on this, along with a recommendation that, before it comes to council, that those two items are addressed. So that's a flag to council. I think that's a possible way forward, and I'd look to other members to indicate whether you think that's a good idea or not. I'll start with Chris here.
Is it a review of the build-out of a tenant that's coming in, perhaps? Perhaps that's the time that you address it, or are you saying as part of the shall-not-be-permitted? The gentleman on the phone mentioned dry labs, so I think what you're referring to is perhaps wet labs and industrial properties. So you haven't rented it correct, so you want to be able to put something in their lease contract? I'm trying to understand the best way that it needs to be captured. It's a review of the person's expected use that's leasing it? Because they're going to have to do a build-out, I'm assuming. Whoever leases it does the build-out.
Right. My proposal was a little bit like punting it, which is to say, between now and the council meeting, I would look to the applicant, maybe working with staff, to come up with some things, having heard the come up with some things, having heard the, the concern that we have. Having heard those concerns, I'd look to the applicant to come up with a voluntary way to address those concerns. And I think the council will
Yes.
and read these minutes from this meeting. And hopefully will understand the concerns and then be ready to, to evaluate whether the applicant has come up with ways to mitigate those concerns. So it's a sort of higher level.
So, sorry, if I may, uh, speak to, I guess, both of the concerns, uh, before, you know, while, while it's still in play and I have your guys' time. The, the residential use, um, we're hesitant to do, do that because I believe it is, A, it's prohibited under the AOA, and that's what the, you know, the town of Morrisville covers, the, the airport overlay there. And so we believe that the, any condition that would cause the, um, or numerous conditions that would cause in the future, like we can't, you know, can't predict the future, that might cause the town of Morrisville to lift the airport overlay restrictions on the site, would be the same type of conditions that would allow us to, or, or would maybe make this a site that residential might work. You know, maybe, uh, down the line 10, 15, 20 years from now, planes are significantly quieter, maybe they're electric, maybe they're, you know, you're not, it's not a decibel, decibel level. There's a, you know, the concern over right now, there's a 65 DNL, which is the day and night, uh, level of noise on, uh, the, the federal aviation administration says is not safe for people to live in long-term. Well, that changes significantly because of the, the nature of flying has changed significantly. The town of Morrisville might feel that, you know, the airport overlay doesn't, uh, apply in the same way it used to and change it, and in which case, we would be wishing that we didn't put a deed restriction on. We think that the airport overlay addresses, you know, all the concerns as it prohibits, it prohibits residential currently. And so it, it, so we wouldn't want to put a restriction on the property. We, we prefer not to put a restriction on the property that, uh, you know, doesn't affect anything now, but could affect something down the line if the town of Morrisville, deemed the airport overlay to, to no longer be applicable in that area.
Okay. Thank you for that input.
If I, if I may, that's speaking from a market standpoint, that, that's a, that's a perspective. Speaking from a land use standpoint, I'm not really sure what the, um, significance or, or sensibility of, of a redundant restriction on a piece of property would really, you know, do for us here. The, in my opinion, in my experience, the intent of an overlay district is to apply to a broad, um, you know, group of properties that are, uh, in, that are impacted or would impact, uh, the surrounding area. That's the intent fundamentally of, of an overlay district, so that you don't have 40 properties that all are asked to condition a particular use out. So just from a practical, fundamental, uh, planning and land use standpoint, I believe that would be a redundant, um, offering if we were to allow or offer a, a land use restriction in there that's already precluded by the zoning or by the overlay.
Thank you. Yep. Any other board member comments or questions?
I have, I don't have concern with the, the, you know, uh, the, you know, having apartments or something like that at, at least. But I'm, I do have concern with the broad term of R and D. And perhaps, and this is, this will probably come, become more and more. So perhaps we need to better define what R and D really means, especially when we are considering as part of BAC. So that may be one area that we may want to at least have either the staff come up with a better definition or stop working with the client, come up with a better definition of the R and D usage, uh, specifically, and then, you know, we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Sanjay. Vice Chairperson Langston, um, any comments or questions?
I was actually getting ready to say something. So I know Michelle had said that, you know, the heavier use would not be allowed, you know, based upon the zoning. So I, I guess this sort of everything comes down to, you know, where is that line? I mean, do we as a, you know, in the, in the planning department, do they have a, any sort of verbiage that would sort of help delineate that line?
So, Michelle?
Vice Chairman, as you were speaking, I was just looking up the UDO definition of research laboratory. So just, um, to read that to everyone because that's the additional use that we're all talking about that would be permitted with this rezoning. Um, and that definition is a facility that is designed or equipped for basic or applied research of experimental study, testing or analysis in the natural and medical sciences or engineering, including educational activities associated with and accessory to such, uh, research. And I could also look up, um, if you'd like, um, some of our manufacturing definitions. Those start to get into, um, just giving the definitions of light and medium manufacturing, you start seeing words like fabrication, assembly, um, packaging, noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare, vibration. Without reading these very long definitions to you verbatim, um, you do start to get into some of that with those other definitions, just for everyone's information.
Thank you, Michelle.
I mean, because, you know, what it comes down to it, we all drive by dozens of what this sounds like they're trying to do every day. I don't think anyone thinks twice about it. Pretty much a staple of all these single-story office facilities, all up and down to Southport, Keystone, everywhere else. I mean, there are these sort of small life sciences companies in there. I mean, this sounds like it could be a big one, I don't know. But it's certainly something that is throughout, um, the area, and I don't know that it would be vastly different or any certain to anyone, you know, outside the property. Um, you know, generally, even in a lab, a wet lab, a lot of times, you can deal with all of your waste with very compact stuff that's under the cabinet. So I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know that it's a huge problem. I mean, unless they were gonna go do something very different than what they're doing with the facility right now. I mean, it doesn't seem like the design and everything else is, is, is a manufacturing lab to me, but I mean, uh, I don't know.
I, I agree with you that there are quite a few labs around. But again, right, it, it's about how, you know, all the things that Michelle just described in manufacturing, you know, all those things can also happen in a lab. And, and so it's not about, and I don't necessarily have a concern that these will become a major one. I'm just saying that as a town and as a, as we are reviewing some of these, uh, proposals, we need to have a crystal definition of what that means. That's all. And it's not to say that this is, uh, this one or the other makes any difference. It's just having a crystal definition and defining the boundaries between them.
I mean, it sounds like you're, you're talking more about like, what, how, what does the UDO say? And, you know, I, I mean, and maybe there, there could be some room for some more tight language there, maybe, but I, you know, I guess, I, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I don't know that it would concern me if there were some, what, you know, small wet labs in there. I mean, I, I'm just, I don't think the problem that, I, I just don't think that's gonna be a problem. Because I think it's part and parcel these days to attracting any kind of good tenants. I mean, we've got more and more of these companies, and they've been here, it is not even that new, they've been here for, for a long time. You know, I, I just don't see that being a huge problem, but.
I agree with you. I'm not trying to say, and, and I'm sure there are environmental plants and, and reviews that might govern some of what they need to do if they go, you know, into a major research facility. Again, I don't have a
I'm gonna cut us off here and ask, uh, Member Chris Reubach.
I just, I wanted to follow up to, originally I was asking the question around the production. And that's what caught my eye is it was in the letter from Kimley Horn as well as your presentation when you mentioned production. So production of biologics is not going to be large-scale manufacturing, but it involves trucks, it involves warehousing. It's completely different than just doing benchtop labs. So if it would have just been life science offices and labs, you know, I might have had a little question about the labs, but it says associated facilities and you mentioned production. And so if we're talking about vaccines, we're talking about little glass vials, that's completely different, and we're getting into some kind of light manufacturing that requires not just the people showing up on site, but now we have raw materials, ingredients, we have products leaving. So that, my questions were around, is it truly just lab space or is it an industrial lab where you're producing something that's going someplace else for further use? And so I, I, if that helps clarify, I, I'm looking for that clear line, you're not going to be making. And if you do, I assume then it comes back to the planning board. You say, I have a client that wants to produce vaccines, and then it goes back to, I assume you, and you determine, is that now an industrial or is that still laboratory? Would that be the step? Because it, because it comes down to if, if you're just doing benchtop R and D is one thing, but if you're using your lab to produce, and they use that same terminology to produce products in life sciences, that's, then you're in manufacturing.
Honestly, when we
Ma'am.
get into those types of questions, we start asking for detailed descriptions of how business is gonna operate, and we start looking very closely at the definitions in the code, um, and the specific words that are used in those definitions.
I mean, if you do anything like that, you'd have to have a pretty significant change in the site plan based upon everything that I've seen. Because I don't, there's no space for, when they're taking the load knock away that it already existed. So, I, I mean, it would be a significant change. The staff, I'm sure, would have their, uh, you know, ears perked up and would be, you know, reviewing, so, you know.
Do you want to respond?
Yeah, I, I would, I would invite, um, Mr. Elkin, if, if he, if to the degree we can, to clarify the nature of the, the supporting, uh, facilities. But from a zoning standpoint, our intent would be to follow and abide by the definitions that are within lab and research use as, um, the planning director, uh, has, has defined. And I, I wouldn't see any intent or any ability to get, to delve into any of the light to medium manufacturing, um, aspects of those uses.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to suggest then, I think we should be ready for a motion. Anybody like to propose a motion? Chris?
Okay. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2020-258-0A to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the amendment of the land use plan for 1001 Airport Boulevard, located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway to Business Activity Center CPA-406-2020.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yes, Lee Langston.
Seconded by Vice Chairperson Langston. And please go ahead with the roll call vote, Marty.
A member, Acharya.
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Member Totari.
Aye.
Member Reubach.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously.
Chris, do you feel like you want to roll?
Okay, I can go.
Thank you.
As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2020-258-0B to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for a zoning map amendment for 1001 Airport Boulevard, located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley to the Business Activity Center zoning district REZ-336-2020, based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan as in the public interest because, A, approval of the amendment to the land use plan under 2020-258-0RES, A, designates a business activity center as the land use category for the subject property. B, the request is consistent with policy 1A of the 2009 Land Use Plan and promotes development that constitutes, contributes to the council's, to the town's overall image as a well-planned and attractive community to live and work. C, the request is consistent with policy 4A of the 2009 Land Use Plan and incorporates an understanding of the tax revenue and free benefits from new redevelopment needed to help offset infrastructure and service costs.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second to that motion?
I don't have anything indicated in the chat.
I have a second for the motion.
A second.
Seconded by Member Acharya. Please go ahead with the roll call vote.
Okay. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Totari.
Aye.
Member Reubach.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Uh, motion passed. Uh, the consistency statement passed unanimously. I hereby motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2020-258-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 1001 Airport Boulevard, located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway in the Business Activity Center District REZ-336-2020.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second for that motion?
Lee Langston.
Seconded by Lee Langston. Please go ahead with the roll call vote.
Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Totari.
Aye.
Member Reubach.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The zoning map amendment motion passed unanimously.
So thank you, gentlemen, for coming and participating in our discussion. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Elkin.
Thank you all. Thank you, thank you for hearing us and thank you for your time.
So we're gonna take a couple of minutes while we change guard here. Remind members and anybody here that we are still live on the microphones.
Excuse me, you left something back?
They're in the next one, too.
Sorry.
So this is Kim Lee Horn evening, right? So they're going to stay.
You'll see a lot of the same people.
Good. Yeah. Yeah. Elliot, I think we're, I'm out ready to start on item 6C.
All right. My second presentation, similar to the first, is for item 2020-254-0. This is a request to amend land use plan and zoning map for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive. The subject parcel, again shown in red, is located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way. This is the former Sam's Club site. As you can see, that's the county line. It's partially in Wake County and partially in Durham County. Main Street Capital Partners and DRA Advisors are requesting that the land use plan be amended from Regional Activity Center to Industrial, and the zoning map amended from Regional Activity Center District to the Conditional Industrial Management District. The site is adjacent to the RAC zoning district to the south and west, and adjacent to Durham County's Industrial Park zoning district to the north. Like the previous presentation, this request is also to accommodate an anticipated life science use categorized under research laboratory in the UDO. Site is approximately 15.33 acres and identified by Wake County PIN 0747-60-4337 and Durham County PIN 0747-60-44-6119.DW. The current land use is commercial. However, the site has been redeveloped to accommodate, again, lab and office space. The site is located within the town's corporate limits and does not need to be annexed. For the request, the applicant has offered to prohibit the uses shown on the screen, which would typically be permitted in the Industrial Management District. And we can come back to those. They have also offered the following conditions. Major flex space use, if otherwise allowed in IM District, shall only be permitted to the extent that all uses accommodated are permitted uses on the property. As well as medium manufacturing shall only be permitted to the extent that manufacturing of life science products, including, but not limited to, vaccines, cell and gene therapies, or other biotechnology products, is deemed to constitute medium manufacturing. All other forms of medium manufacturing shall be prohibited. Again, the applicant provided trip generation memo based on the TIA conducted in May 2019 to study the impacts of the previously planned general office space use. The memo indicates that no site access changes would be required, and that the anticipated research laboratory use has the potential to generate fewer peak hour trips. Again, this can be found in attachment two. The memo also includes peak hour trip estimates for a sample of other uses that would be permitted on the property if the application is approved. Staff recommends approval of the requested land use plan amendment and zoning map amendment from Regional Activity Center to Conditional Industrial Management for the following reasons. The zoning map amendment would help facilitate reuse of a significant property in a manner that supports the tax base and creates jobs while placing limited demands on the town's The request is compatible with the recommendations in sections 5.9, 5.3.9.A1, 5.3.9.A2, 5.3.9.C1, and 5.3.9.C2 of the 2009 Land Use Plan. The requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the adjacent Durham City Industrial Park zoning district, and the prohibited uses conditioned, condition offered from the applicant would eliminate potential noisier hazardous uses typically permitted in the Industrial Management zoning district. And with the proposed use exclusions, there would be numerous similarities between the uses permitted in the Regional Activity Center zoning district and the proposed Conditional Industrial Management zoning district. The board again is asked to make a recommendation on resolutions A and B and the ordinance. There were no public comments received for this item. As before, the applicant will make a brief presentation, and then will be available for questions after.
Thank you, Elliot. Good evening. My name is Toby Coleman. I am an attorney. My address is 150 Fayetteville Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Main Street and DRA Advisors, which is the owner of the property. This may, for those of you that have been on the board for more than a couple of months, this may look a little familiar to you. We came to you last year to get a special use permit amendment to effectively remove the special use permit that restricted the development of this property to really just retail. And if you go to the next slide, Elliot. So, that work has been complete. That is what the building looks like. That's a sort of a merge of a rendering with the cars, because there's not any cars there yet, but that is how the building looks now. So that picture is accurate. And, you know, I think they've, I, this is me, obviously, as an advocate, I think they've done a great job. You couldn't even tell that it's a, it used to be a Sam's Club. But, anyway, so for some background, this is the unusual rezoning where, again, we don't have, you know, the site has already been developed, the building's already developed, it's already complete. What we're seeking to do is add permitted uses, specifically life science. I was interested to hear the prior case because, frankly, we've spent the last five or so months off and on in discussions with staff about what do research labs really mean, and what, what is the boundary between research lab and, you know, industrial manufacturing of vaccines and things like that? And that, that sort of fit into some of our zoning conditions, as you may have seen, and I'll discuss that in a minute. The, if you go to the next slide. The reason for the rezoning, you know, this, the plan was to develop this property for office and what's known as creative office space, where it could sort of be a mixed use. There could be, you know, offices, various other things. It's currently zoned RAC, which allows for a broad number of uses, including hospitals and things like that. The, one of the things that happened was is that, you know, we want to rezone for, to allow biotech and life science companies that have, you know, bench, you know, have been research labs, clean rooms, things like that. And what happened was, when Main Street started the redevelopment, they didn't fully realize that they're in sort of one of the most significant concentrations of life science and biotechnology companies in the region. This is actually taken from the North Carolina Biotechnology Center's website. This is a map that shows about a mile and a half radius. There's 50 different biotechnology companies just within the mile half of, of this property, which is located right at the Durham County line, along, off of 54 and just north of 540. As Main Street began redevelopment, the claimer for the space from the biotech industry made it clear that, that this is something that needs to be considered. You know, this is a rapidly, as, as some of the members have already stated, this is a market that's been in Morrisville for a while, but it's also a rapidly changing and growing market. There's, both in the triangle and across the country, for a variety of reasons, including COVID, but also just because of the growth of this industry. As I understand it, Raleigh-Durham is one of four to five markets that's really sort of the places where these companies want to come, and it's because of the number of PhDs. Morrisville is at the center of the Raleigh-Durham sort of concentration, and this is, this is one of the hubs. As is evidenced, I think, both by member comments, you know, from a national perspective, you know, President Trump came to the Fujifilm Diocent plant, which is right outside of the, you know, is effectively Morrisville, to talk about vaccine and vaccine making. So, this is something that really has, is part of Morrisville's future. If you go to the next slide, Elliot. So, one of the interesting parts is that the sort of modern mixed use in Morrisville already includes biotechnology, at least in this part of town. So what you see here is, you know, the, the site that we're proposing to rezone is called INC 1101. It's right there, highlighted. And what you have is the, the residential and retail uses numbered 1, 2, 3, and 4 there to the south. Number 5 on that map is a, a building that Pfizer has, I believe, purchased for the purposes of gene editing. And so that's right down the block. And again, all the, all the property in the north is zoned industrial. This is an area where part of the mixed use aspect really already is biotechnology companies. If you go to the next slide. Just to give you a sense, here's a, I think this is a recent drone picture. That is the front of the building with the parking, right there. This is looking north, northeast into, towards 40, and, and to your left, it's sort of to the, to, to our left is the Durham County line. You can see sort of the industrial parks that sort of roll out there to the north. There is a, this is an area where, you know, there's significant demand for, for biotechnology space. It's outstripping supply, and this is something that is consistent with the surroundings and could further Morrisville's in this, in this industry. If you move to the next slide. So, the need for, I want to talk a little bit about the need for the rezoning. As I mentioned, we've been talking with staff about this for, for months and trying to sort of figure out, how do we do this? You know, we, frankly, when this first came up, you know, when Pfizer moved in down the block and, and there was a realization that this is a major issue, you know, the question was, is, are you guys seriously going to come back again? And you guys may, may have a little bit of that. But, you know, the truth is, is that the, the reason we need to is because, you know, Morrisville's code needs, does not completely reflect the reality of, of what Morrisville is today, and what modern offices are. As somebody noted, there's a lot of biotechnology companies already that people just drive by every day, they don't think anything about. This is going to fit into that category. You know, the, the outside, the skin already looks how it's going to look. And biotechnology companies, what they want is a mix of office lab, and in, in the case of this, potentially GMP manufacturing to produce vaccines, gene therapies, things like that. RAC zoning doesn't permit that. It doesn't, as the prior rezoning case noted, it doesn't permit research labs, and it doesn't, research labs, you know, at least are conservative read, because we want it to be as, you know, as clean as possible. Our conservative read was, is research labs don't really have any space and, and don't really provide any flexibility for doing production. So, to the extent that somebody wanted to produce a gene therapy or produce a vaccine, as you can, under the Durham zoning code, just to the north, there needs to be some sort of industrial provision. So what we've proposed is a Conditional Industrial Management zoning that would facilitate and allow life science uses with a production component while prohibiting a majority of industrial uses that are consistent with the adjoining development. There is, I believe, I'd send it along, and I think it's in the packet, we sort of, in addition to what the, the town did, there was a, we have like a color-coded appendix that sort of shows what the permitted uses are and what the prohibited uses are. And I'd be happy to take questions on that, if anybody has any. If you go to the next slide.
Sure.
So, addressing the zoning conditions, you know, as I mentioned, we've, we've, there's a long list of things that are prohibited. There's also a long list of things that are permitted. Frankly, what this rezoning does is it effectively, you know, there's, there's a lot of sort of smaller uses that probably are not, unless you, unless somebody has particular questions, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. But what this does is it eliminates residential as a permitted use on this property, and it permits research labs, and it permits light industrial and medium industrial to the extent that it would, that the town ever deems production of vaccines and things like that to be medium industrial, but prohibits anything else. And the definition, as I understand it, and Michelle and Elliot can certainly correct me, the distinction between the light and medium industrial, as I understand it in the code, and, again, we've spent some time discussing this, is that light industrial means, you know, noise, odors, things like that, do not leave the building, everything's enclosed, and medium industrial has some impacts on adjoining properties. Part of the reason I highlight those uses is not just to highlight, you know, that we're, we're being consistent both with the residential and retail uses, as well as the industrial uses next door, but also to highlight that this is not a myopic, single-use zoning district. This is not something where we're crafting, where we're coming to you asking for a zoning district that would only allow life sciences and doesn't allow for a wide array of uses that are consistent. It still allows retail, still allows office. You know, the idea here, frankly, is, is that life science users, at least what we're, what my client is seeing right now, is that life science users are ready to invest significant amounts in outfit. They tend to have, you know, use the same amount of space with fewer employees who are paid more, and you've got, you know, higher education employees. Overall, we think it's a, a win for the town. If you go to the next slide. Just want to note, so here is the, there is an associated land use plan map amendment. It's currently in, designated in the RAC land use map designation. Just to note, what we're proposing is to go to industrial. That would be consistent with a large portion of the future land use map in Durham, just to the north, as you can see. Again, one of the other things, again, that Elliot noted is that, and I don't have a slide for this, but just wanted to mention it again, is, is that we did, go ahead and take a look at what the impact of a life science use would be if, and based on the review done by Kevin, who's here and can answer questions, the peak hour usage would be less, anticipated to be less than a, a general office use. With that, we are available for questions.
Thank you. Any board member wish to ask a question or make a comment on that? Chris, go ahead.
There aren't any of the Varian Labs inside, correct?
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Varian?
Animal Labs.
Oh, animal labs, no. That is not part of the plan. I would, yeah. That's not, that is not who, my understanding is, is knocking on the door.
Anything else, Chris? Any other member wish to make a comment or ask a question?
I have nothing from the remote members at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Well, and there were no public comments?
No, no, sir.
I, I should have welcomed you back, because we do remember the previous, previous one. I think then we're ready for a motion. Chris, it's your night.
All right. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2020-254-0A to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the amendment of the land use plan for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way to Industrial CPA-397-2020.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Sanjay.
Member Acharya has seconded. Will you please do the roll call vote?
All right. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterei.
Aye.
Member Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The land use plan amendment, motion passed unanimously.
Chris, go ahead.
As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2020-254-0B to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the amendment of the land use plan for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way to Industrial CPA-397-2020.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Sanjay.
Member Acharya has seconded. Will you please do the roll call vote?
All right. Member Acharya.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterei.
Aye.
Member Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The land use plan amendment, motion passed unanimously.
Chris, go ahead.
As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2020-254-0B to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for a zoning map amendment for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way to the Conditional Industrial Management Zone District REZ-214-2020 based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because, A, approval of the amendment of the land use plan under 2020- public interest because A, approval of the amendment of the land use plan under 2020-254-0, resolution A designates industrial as the land use category for the subject property. B, it supports Section 5.3.9A II of the 2009 Land Use Plan, which recommends providing industrial uses as an integral component of the town's employment land use areas. C, in accordance with Section 5.3.9A II of the 2009 Land Use Plan, the industrial land use category functions to encourage the co-location of industrial uses that are compatible with office, commercial, and other employment or institutional uses for the town in an integrated and harmonious development character. D, the requested rezoning supports Section 5.3.9CI of the 2009 Land Use Plan, which recommends that the industrial land use category should be comparable with the overall character and visual improvements in the surrounding areas. E, the request supports Section 4.3.9CII of the 2009 Land Use Plan by providing for industrial uses that are compatible with office, commercial, and residential development by the virtue of the size and the land of outdoor storage or manufacturing activities and other activities or emissions that could have a detrimental impact on the surrounding residential or business use.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second for that motion? Second by Tim Toterae. Ask Marty to do the roll call vote for the motion.
Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterae.
Aye.
Chairman Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The consistency statement was passed unanimously.
Chris, go ahead.
And there's one more.
One more?
Okay. I hear they make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2020-254-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 1101 Shiloh-Glen Drive, located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh-Glen Drive and El Paso Way to the Conditional Industrial Management Zoning District REZ-214-2020.
Do I have a second for that motion? Seconded by Vice Chairperson Langston. Please go ahead.
Member Acharya.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterae.
Aye.
Chairman Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The zoning map amendment was passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you working with our mechanics and how we get this all down. Thank you very much for coming. Great job, Chris. Do you need like a throat lassin' or?
I didn't have my bike pedal was on, I struck.
So I think we can move straight away to staff comments. Thanks, Elliot.
Thank you.
Michelle.
Okay, so coincidentally enough, in reviewing the August newsletter with all of you, first item was this middle of a rezoning application for the former outlet mall, which you just heard this evening. Also, I had two administrative approvals that occurred in August. One was site plan approval for a new Starbucks to be located on Carrington Mill Boulevard, and the other, a new WoodSpring Suites Hotel, 122 rooms, located at 610 Airport Boulevard. Town Council did also approve the special use permit for the mobile classrooms at Cedar Fork Elementary School, and they did approve the proposed UDO tax amendments that you also considered about a month ago. In other news, a lot of focus right now on the land use plan update. That was one of the items that you recently considered. It was presented to Town Council, kind of introduced to them at two sessions, one on August 24th and one on August 26th. We do have scheduled now two virtual open houses for the public, and those are coming up next week. There are two times that those are going to be held. The first is Monday, September 14th, from 5:00 to 6:30, and the other Tuesday, September 15th, from 11:30 to 1:00. And that will be an opportunity for any members of the public that want to learn more about the plan to do so, and there'll be Q and A with our senior planner Brad West and our consultants, Howes Levine. Town Council is then scheduled for further discussion on the land use plan on September 21st and September 22nd, and talking about further opportunities for discussion if they do need that as well. The draft sign code is also on the town website, and we're currently soliciting public input for that, and that continues to be on your calendar for review at a special meeting on September 24th. So once again, thank you for agreeing to dedicate and volunteer additional time so that we could focus on that topic and kind of make some headway on that project. And that is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Michelle. On the land use plan open houses, what's, what format are they going to take?
They are going to be occurring through Teams. It'll be through our Teams live event, but there are direct links posted that you could click and connect directly to those meetings. You do not have to pre-register, so you can find those links either on the town's Facebook page or on the project website.
Thank you. And on your text amendments, I think that included the, the fact that we as a board will no longer review site plans, is that correct?
It did, yes.
And I don't recall much discussion about that. It just sailed through without much consideration of what the planning and zoning board had That's a comment more than a question, so.
With the dissolution of the BOA as well and the transfer of their duties to you, we are looking for some time on an upcoming agenda to do some, some training with PCB on variances and appeals, very similar to what you're used to quasi judicial, especially special use permits, but we'll be scheduling something with you on that soon as well.
Thank you. Will Chris be excused as a former member of the? We'll see.
I think Lee was also a former member.
Good point.
That's correct.
All right. So open it for board comments, and let me start with Lee, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thanks, everybody.
Sanjay, any comments?
Just a quick question around the, the elementary mobile, mobile classrooms. Did the, or did the board accept our recommendations for the timeline that we set forward, or was there? Did it go?
There was some discussion about that item, but ultimately it got approved without any time limit associated with it.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Thank you. No, that's it, thanks.
Tim, any comments?
No, no comment.
Josh?
No comment.
Just for you, Michelle, as we started to talk about the change in duties, at one point you mentioned we might spend more focus on the UDO. Is that something that you want us to help make suggestions, or you'll just be bringing those to us as the department works through those changes?
Absolutely. If any planning and zoning board members have any suggestions for amendments, we are always open to those. Based on discussions with Town Council on retreat, we are kind of working through amendments in priority order that they gave to us. So the first were some of those administrative process-related amendments. The sign code coming next, really just needing once again to, to get to it and wrap up that project. And then access and circulation comes right after that. So that's TIA's, that's cross-access. It, it covers a fair amount of, of territory there, so specifically if you have ideas or suggestions on those, we are in the process of drafting them right now, hoping to bring those forward to you by the end of the year. And then, once those are through, we'll be tackling landscaping, tree preservation, common open space, kind of as a group, because there's a lot of interrelationship between all of those. But yes, suggestions are, are always welcome.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of random comments. One is that I haven't had the pleasure of visiting the new, new revamped Aquatics Center, but I gather from one of our members that it's an awesome facility, and it's fascinating to me to see how that's progressed since the, the mid-'90s, when the town was very much smaller, but had good commercial tax base and was able to have a facility way above what you'd expect from such a small population, and that was because they bought the former, former Gold's Gym, which is now the new MFAC. So it's been fascinating to see how that's evolved over time, and it sort of reflects how Morrisville has improved and, and gotten better. The other random comment is, as I drive around, just a reminder for, for me and for other members in the future, that looking at the Savan development and also the Woods Partners development, we see those typically on a two-dimensional piece of paper, and we look at the two dimensions. It's interesting to me how much the underlying ground has been raised at Woods Partners and certainly at Savan, and that's just a sort of thought to tuck away when we're reviewing site plans, that we have to think about the height as well as the width and the length. That weird comment. Any other contributions?
I have a quick comment back up.
Yeah, please go ahead, Lee.
So that, that, I think, I can't remember if it was Gold's Gym, but you know, that was part of the Cross Timbers development that sort of went under, but that we still see a couple of little remnants of signs to go way back in the day for the Morrisville Aquatics Center.
Very good. So you and I have to form an old guys' club and we'll go and have a beer somewhere and reminisce about the old days. All right, let's get serious for a moment. Chris, you're on such a roll, would you like?
Hey, sorry, one, one just maybe a question for a bit from Michelle is, I remember I had to step out of the town meeting last, on Tuesday, but there was discussion around the widening of Morrisville Carpenter Road. Do you want to give a quick update on, I believe they are trying to start and get it done in first half of 2021? At least that's what I heard before I dropped off. Could you just give us a quick update on that?
Yeah, so absolutely, and thank you for that, because that's an important project for the town, and I think that one that a lot of focus had been placed on, and, and then things got put on hold really due to COVID. But we are going back out to bid with that project pretty much as we speak, and looking for construction to begin at the very start of 2021.
That's good news. Much, much needed work in that area. Thank you.
All right, Chris.
Do you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final roll call vote.
Last time, Member Acharya.
Thank you. Aye.
Okay, Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Toterae.
Aye.
Chairman Robuck.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks again to staff one more time for doing all these logistics and making it all work, thank you.